Welcome to the September 10, 2024 City Council Work Session. I'd now like to turn it over to City Manager Benda to walk us through the Agenda Overview.
Ladies and Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, this afternoon, we have one work session, Agenda item, which is bid opening and acceptance. And we've done that in the past. The City Clerk, together with the City Attorney, works together with Mayor. There's a script that's read, and it's opened, and then you will later vote on it during your formal docket. So, other than opening and closing the bid, so long as there's no one in the room, that will be that. And then Business Item Briefings, we have a bit more this time than we've had previously. Remember, Business Item Briefings are those informational items that we position ahead of a vote. So, we talk, give you feedback, you give us feedback, we have a discussion, and then at a subsequent meeting, we vote on whatever that particular item. You'll see here, because our last meeting, we ran along on a couple of things. So, our Finance Committee, there were a couple of grants that were in there. So, those will be positioned to be briefed here today. One of the topics for conversation was pushed. Our great, wonderful Officer Ball was under the weather. He's currently with us, with a team of folks from the state, to talk about deer population reduction. And then, there are a couple of items from Melva, that she'll engage you. And then, we have Donna here to talk about quarterly adjustments. And then, you will remember, we had a roll call item by our Mr. Vice Mayor about lifelong learning, and Dr. Holly Jennings will brief you on that. And then, our City Clerk will engage you about boards and commissions. And then, there are two closed-session items for this evening. And Mayor, if I may, there's at least two pop-ups that I'm aware of. If you're okay with transitioning to those. One will be our Deputy City Manager Greg Patrick. It's been a minute since we've had the information. I sent you a memorandum. We received word from Lynchburg City Schools that they were going to rescind a path that they were taking as far as school construction enclosure. They're no longer taking that path. And I wanted, if anything, for Deputy City Manager Greg Patrick to kind of make sure, you know where we are, what resources there are, and what, if anything, we want to consider as a next step or path as we move into fiscal '26. And then, also, our City Clerk. Good news, as I understand it, is that the system that has been problematic, at no fault of her or any of your own, is now hopefully better, cured, and ready to rock. So, as soon as Greg finishes his pop-up, you will then, as I understand it, test it, so that we'll be ready for later this evening. And so, with that, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it over to Greg Patrick.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. Again, just wanted to provide some background information on school construction and the path they've chosen to take. Take a look at the cost of what it might be to build an elementary school, and then, kind of review what some funding options may be. So, Council is prepared to enter into these conversations with schools that I think your joint work session, which is now scheduled for October 22. So, as the manager mentioned, last year, the schools adopted a plan to move forward with the closing of TC Miller and Sandusky Elementary School, and expand Bass. Put about $15 million into Bass. Recently, they've decided to scrap that plan. There will not be, the plan now does not include an expansion of Bass. Keeps TC Miller and Sandusky open, and actually contemplates building a new Sandusky Elementary School. So, I wanted to provide, Council, a background on where we have been within our CIPs with respect to school construction funding. If we go back to the fiscal year 2019 to 2023 CIP, there was actually $21.5 million in that CIP for a project that was titled "Sandusky Elementary School Replacement." So, a Sandusky replacement has been contemplated for quite a long time. And that project was then removed in the fiscal year 20 to '24 CIP. So, it was in one CIP, came out the next CIP. And then, in the fiscal year '23 through '27, and the fiscal year '24 through '28 CIP, there was a project called Debt Capacity for Future Schools Projects, with total planned funding of $42.1 million. Now, this wasn't specifically slated for a Sandusky replacement. It was meant to help fund the recommendations of the school facility study. This project was ultimately removed in this most recent CIP, as, quite frankly, our ability to afford the debt service costs going forward were, just weren't there, right? We were not going to have the funding to afford that debt service. Next, we wanted to understand what the cost of a replacement Sandusky Elementary School might be. Keep in mind that current Sandusky Elementary School has capacity for about 480 students. So, we looked around the Commonwealth. What would be the best comp for a recently constructed or recently planned school? What we found is, the most immediate comp that we could locate was an elementary school facility in Albemarle County. It was going to be for 500 students. The engineers estimate, after they'd done real design work, looked at real FFNE costs, was about $38 million for construction, and $44 million all in, once you considered construction and FFNE, which is furniture, fixtures, and equipment. Many of you may recall seeing an estimate of $56.1 million to rebuild a Sandusky Elementary School. This actually came out of the Schools Facility Consultants Report. That's MGT, the Schools Facility Consultant. That number, though, was to rebuild Sandusky. But it also included, that scenario included converting Heritage Elementary to an alternative education center, and closing the Fort Hill Community School. So, what we don't know from that study is, what was the size of that pondered Sandusky Elementary School? Schools have recently come out with an estimate for rebuilding a new Sandusky. It would be about $50 million for an enlarged school, and about $35 million for a like-to-like replacement. So, when Council thinks about a replacement cost, if you're thinking between $35 and $50 million, that's probably a pretty good, a pretty good number. So, funding options. How would you fund a new Sandusky, and some of the other needs that have been expressed in the Schools Facility Study? That the first method that you may be aware of is, the state actually has a school construction grant program. That construction grant program provides a maximum of 30% of the construction cost of a school. In fact, schools actually applied for a school construction grant through this program for Bass Elementary. I think we were awarded $4 million last year. But one thing that I don't think any of us realized at that point in time, or really, until we started doing a little bit of research around a new Sandusky, is that program comes with strings. It requires a locality to certify that it will maintain school funding at a level that is equal or greater to its percentage of local revenue during, throughout the period over which the project is financed. So, essentially, that program creates, and we haven't got any guidance from the state on exactly how this works, but it essentially creates a funding formula that would not allow Council to provide, as a percentage of its local revenues, any less funding than in the current year in which it was funded. So, if local revenues increased, it would require Council to increase its level of school funding at that same percentage. So, it sort of ties Council's hands with respect to the financing of school operations and school funding, for the lifetime that that school is financed, which would be 20 or 30 years, right? You know, there's other grants or alternative funding programs. This is ideal, right? Grant funding to build a new school with no strings attached. The Mayor, to her credit, a few weeks ago, went and spoke directly to the state's school superintendent, and asked for $150 million to help with our school infrastructure needs. Unfortunately, this is really difficult. This is, there isn't a lot of funding out there for school construction that is going to be no strings attached. So, outside of that, where do you turn? You turn to city capital funding. This is, city CIP funds, that is essentially debt that we would issue and have to repay back over 20 or 30 years. So, rule of thumb, every $10 million in debt costs about $1 million in debt service every year for 20 years. So, a $35 million school, let's say this is school, the low estimate of schools just replacing a like-for-like Sandusky, would cost about $3.5 million in debt service per year, each year for the next 20 years, which is equal to, you know, right now, about four-plus cents on the real estate tax. A more expensive school, $50 million school, would cost about $5 million a year in debt service every year for the next 20 years. That's six-plus cents on the real estate tax for 20 years. So, regardless of the actual cost, any investment in a new Sandusky or other significant investments in school facilities that relies primarily on city capital funding is going to put a pretty tremendous strain on city finances, and would likely require some difficult decisions for Council around services and other considerations. So, that's the update that I have for you today. I just wanted to provide context, because I know this is going to be a big topic of conversation when you meet with the school board, and it's a big topic of conversation for constituents that, right now, I'm sure. So, I hope this was helpful.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Can we, can we have Mr. Patrick up for some questions, if you mind?
Absolutely.
Okay. Vice Mayor, probably.
I want to respect our time, and I know this will be a future conversation, so I don't want to consume all of our time on this topic, since it wasn't on the agenda. But I think I would only submit at this point that it sounded like there was one option that was not included in Opportunities here. And I realize what I'm recommending would potentially leave state funding on the table for other projects. But if there's opportunity for us to take the local dollars that fund projects that may not be as critical, especially in the transportation realm and roads, that may not be in dire need of another roundabout, and I know that could be a charged term in the city, I'm willing to leave those dollars on the table if that spot is okay for the next little bit. If it means we've recovered a few hundred thousand dollars here and there in the CIP to fund this path. And so, I think it behooves us to not limit us to just, while there's the state, there's us funding it entirely ourselves, without looking at our spending as well.
I may, it's a great segue. Mr. Vice Mayor, I don't know if you're plugging the series that we started in the Physical Development Committee today. But one of the things that we've begun to do, because we know that there's interest each year in the Capital Improvement Plan and what the projects are in there. And so, we have started in earnest. No sooner did we adopt it this past year's fiscal year budget, but we today even started about a couple of different projects to include Miller Park Pool and also our library. And so, if anything, we understand, like you said, there's another option here. And if Council's direction is to move in that way, we will show you what we can and cannot do. And you'll recall, and I know that you remember, so do your peers, that what we proposed and was adopted this year was a maintenance CIP, which is exactly that, that there were only so many things that we could afford as it relates to the infrastructure associated with the city. Even more so, like you said, with a roundabout or some other areas. If there are ways in which that we can move some things out to position some things that are absolutely priorities for Council, we will do so, and we intend to show those sooner than later.
Councilman Hugson?
You know, when I see this, and I hear the concept of critical needs, and that's why I was adamant against spending eight million bucks on an amphitheater just a few months ago. When we look at these critical needs, we've got to actually assess and recognize what is critical and what is not. We've read the MGT report, as you had referred to, where the costs, the debt service, you're looking at 50-some million dollars for something that we were now getting lost in the fact of these two consultants that have reported with the thousands of less students, with the less capacity that is there. I think, you know, we shouldn't make political moves to say, hey, let's just do something. You know, let's use our brains and come up with solutions. I proposed quite a while ago how we can actually use Sandusky Middle School to make that a very large elementary school. Utilizing that makes a whole lot of sense. I think some of the school board members now have recognized that and have even started talking about that. So, I don't think it's a, I don't think the school board has made a final decision. They just said, hey, let's at least remove some things, and let's start talking about it. But we have got to be prudent, because as you mentioned, I don't think anybody on here is going to want to say, let's raise real estate taxes by six cents. I think we should be doing the opposite. And we, or we shouldn't say, hey, let's cut out fixing roads and bridges. Priorities are there. Last year's CIP, as you mentioned, was a maintenance CIP. Not having new construction or new buildings or new things maintaining, it is pretty critical. Also, when we're saying, hey, let's take money from roads, well, that's one thing, if it's 100% funded by locality. A lot of those roads, we have smart scale. We have lots of different grants that are a 2% contribution from the locality, not 100%. Now, the amphitheater, that was a different story. That was 100% local. Utilizing money that could easily have been freed up in our debt service by paying down the brand-new police headquarters. But with this, I'm not prepared to say, let's scrap what two consultants have said to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayers' expense to get their input and advice, where they said, we have a huge decline in enrollment. We have some schools that aren't in great shape. The school board's got to come to a good conclusion. You know, and too, let's, we've got to recognize that, even if we were to say, hey, the school capacity or the school numbers, enrollment numbers were growing. With that, what that would say is, reading that report by either MGT or the other consultants, said where that school should be built is right where the current Sandusky Elementary School is. So, what does that mean? That means tearing down the current school, then starting to build. And if anybody's seen the police headquarters, it's not put up in a day. It's not like Liberty University putting a new bridge in in about a week or putting up a building. They take some time. I mean, it'll be several years. The demolition, the new construction, the bidding, the, all that stuff. You're looking at several years. So, we need to make good decisions, not political decisions. You know, so, I'm not in favor of moving forward, and I appreciate your report with regarding to the fiscal stress on our taxpayers, with the stress in the budget. Those grants, I'm glad that finally came out, because those, having those strings attached would be a terrible thing. May be fine if enrollment was increasing. What if enrollment continues to decline? And so, now you have to fund a certain percentage of the city budget with fewer and fewer percentage. Years ago, we used to be somewhere around 20% of the population was in public schools. I think we're now down to about 7% or 8%. City population has grown, schools' population has declined, about 80-some, 82,000, and we're looking at about 7,200 in enrollment. So, those percentages have gone down to about maybe 8%, 9%, something like that. If we had to have a, pick up a grant and have a funding formula that's tied to, based on the revenue, without the way the state even funds is based on ADM, based on the students, that's a bad formula, a bad thing. And I'm glad you found that out now. So, how did you find that? Did, so the schools already applied for the grant, or they didn't read it? Or did they didn't recognize those strings, or how did that go?
It was a new program, and I'm not sure how much, how developed the application process was when they applied. It is, it was in the guidance that has been published. There was a, I think there is a section of the application process where, currently, that the applicant must actually receive the blessing or the approval of the Council or the Board prior to submitting the application. I'm not sure that that was part of the application process when schools made the application last year, a year and a half ago, primarily because it's such a new program. But like anything else, you know, we still don't have guidance from the state to know exactly what that language means practically. It seems pretty straightforward, but it, they may soften the actual implementation of it. So, we'll just have to kind of pay attention to how, what the practice is when localities actually receive these grant funds, what guidance they receive from the state. But we don't want to be in a situation where, you know, we've essentially handcuffed future councils from being able to make fiscal decisions.
Thank you. Because the normal process of what we do with grants is, that's why it normally goes through the, you know, the Finance Committee before the application, just to kind of vet at least a little bit, what is the backend? You know, Stephen Covey talked about, begin with the end in mind. And before you submit for an application, you should kind of know what the end is, rather than, you know. So, I'm glad you caught that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, probably.
If you'd permit, I would be curious if Councilman Hugson is insinuating any of us are making a political versus good decision.
I believe this is political. I mean, it's.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I might offer, I find that incredibly disingenuous and insulting. Well, that's not true. And, you know, frankly, if we're talking about a political decision, maybe we should consider how long you've been thinking about retiring, if it's been for a year or half or not. If you really want a school to close, maybe it should be Sheffield and in your own district, not mine.
Mr. Patrick, I do want to make one, you can, you can say where you are, it's fine. Just one comment, that even if we take Sandusky out of the picture, because, you know, things keep changing every single day with these plans, we still have over $100 million of school improvements that were part of the CIP requests that the schools made of the, you know, $139 million was requested in this past year's budget. $9 million is what we gave. $104 million is what I presented to the Secretary of Education when I went up to meet with her, of specifically improvements that are really needed in our schools currently. HVAC systems that are completely, you know, outdated and are not functioning to their capacity at schools right now that are causing, you know, problems for the kids and during the school year, and other improvements that are really needed. So, regardless of the Sandusky piece, we still need to figure out a funding source for those improvements. There are some really important ones. So, you know, I'll keep fighting for requesting other ways to get money. I'm planning on going up to DC and fighting up there and asking as well. And I know that I'll be asking Meche. It's part of our legislative package to ask our state representatives, again, to try to figure out a way that the state can help us. But I appreciate your presentation. Thanks so much.
Ms. Finney, do you want to do your pop-up now?
Yes, thank you. As the manager had mentioned, we've been working for many months with the developer of our media management software, and we are excited and frankly, a little nervous to announce that we think we have a solution. You all have been prepped on the failsafe. If something goes wrong, the pop-up doesn't come up. So, I thought it'd be nice if we just did a lighthearted vote right now. So, how about we vote to approve Fall as the Best Season in the City of Lynchburg? That could be controversial. All right, so I've started the vote. You should see a pop-up. Okay, one has made it in.
I don't have anything.
I'll get three locked in.
Yes.
Okay. Yep, I made a read.
I did mine on the e-vote.
Click e-vote one more time.
It's good that we're doing the practice. I said that I already cast my vote. Yep.
It's not coming through. Let's see. It did not capture one of the votes. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
Made a read. Let's try it one more time. Yeah, some people don't like fall. Okay. Councilmember Dolan? Oh, yay. All right. Fall wins. All right, thank you all very much.
All right. Is that it?
That is it.
I just have to say, thank you to our wonderful clerk, who has been fighting with technology for the last year, really. It's not her fault. She's been really wanting us to be able to use this technology, and she has battled and battled. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will have a successful evening. Okay, we're good to move on? No more pop-ups? No more pop-ups? Excellent. All right, so for our work session agenda items, the app co-easement for Riverfront Park bid opening acceptance. The next item on our agenda is the app co-easement for Riverfront Park bid opening. Ms. Finney, how many bids have been received?
Madam Mayor, as a result of an advertisement placed in the news in advance on August 15th and again on August 23rd, one bid was received at September 3rd from our office from Appalachian Power.
Can you please read the bid?
Yes, ma'am. Please accept this letter of commitment on behalf of Appalachian Power Company as a bid being submitted pursuant to the invitation for bids and public hearing advertisement published in the news in advance regarding the grant conveyance of a right-of-way and easement upon the city of Lynchburg-owned property located at 1100 Jefferson Street, Lynchburg, Virginia, and 89th Street, Lynchburg, Virginia. An original executed acceptance page of the proposed ordinance authorizing the grant conveyance of such right-of-way and easement accompanies this letter of commitment, and I do have that. This was signed by Jake Patrick, Senior Right-of-Way Agent.
Thank you. Are there any additional bids offered? If there are no additional bids, I declare the bidding is closed. Is there a motion to accept this sole bid?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Hope we need to go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Huggelson?
You can click the e-vote.
All right, the moment we're all waiting for. The motion passes. You got it.
So last time it just like popped up on the screen for the vote?
The fail-safe is that e-vote button in your upper left-hand corner. You've got that training aid at your desk.
Yep, I hit that. But when does it actually just pop up?
It should pop up, and I don't know. I can't speak to the code of why it doesn't. But there is a fail-safe option.
Gotcha, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. A public hearing will be conducted tonight at 7:00 PM to hear from members of the public regarding the adoption of an ordinance granting the easement to the successful bidder. All right, our business item briefings. Training for regional staff and Historic Preservation Commission members. This item will appear before council for action tonight during general business. Ms. Eve Burgenthaler, hello.
Hello. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, Community Development has been awarded a $9,500 certified local government grant from the Virginia Department of Historic Resources. The grant will allow us to host training for regional staff and Historic Preservation Commission members. The National Alliance of Preservation Commissions Commissioner Assistance and Mentoring Program, CAMP for short, will provide a day-long workshop, offering six sessions geared toward assisting regional certified local governments and their historic commissions. CAMP training offerings include sessions like legal basics, standards and guidelines for design review, and alternative materials in historic districts. Workshop attendance will be capped at 50 people. The grant will cover the full cost of the training itself, and the Community Development training budget will cover the cost of the venue and refreshments. The resolution to amend the fiscal year 2025 city, federal, state aid fund budget and appropriate the $9,500 grant will appear for a first reading and council consideration on tonight's general business agenda and for a second reading on September 24th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, one question. Have we done any work or training with the, this alliance in the past?
Not while I've been secretary to the Historic Preservation Commission. I think Tom, I don't know. Do you remember when the last one? Yeah.
But we've done it before?
We have had trains before, but it's been quite a while.
Yes, sir.
Sorry to be dense. With this organization?
I would have to check that, sir.
Don't worry about it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, moving on to the Paramount Park Improvement Grants. This item will appear before council for action on the first reading of the grants tonight during general business and again on September 24th, 2024, for the acceptance of property, dedication of easements, and the second reading of the grants. Mr. Wyatt Woody.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. So the purpose of this briefing is to, is to receive grant funding from the Virginia Outdoor Foundation, $169,000, and the Department of Conservation and Recreation at $153,000 for park improvements at Paramount. Grant funding would be used to develop the paved quarter-mile walking loop, which the schools already started calling the Panther Path, nature paths, picnic area, fenced off-leash area, drainage improvements, and the outdoor classroom. The park improvements are supported by current master plan and the comprehensive plans. This helps to address a park desert that's identified in both plans. No matching city funding is required for the grants, and the park improvements received numerous survey requests, survey results, and very positive public feedback. So the open space dedication required for the grant, the open space easements are designed to preserve lands and public purposes that benefit by remaining largely undeveloped, such as for parks, woodlands, and stormwater management. The property would be placed in an easement that is extremely low development potential due to steep slopes, poor soils, and the public infrastructure. Council has taken similar action for park improvements at Timbridge Hill Neighborhood and at Jefferson Park in Deerington Neighborhood. And the shaded gray area is what would be the 20 acres of the easement. So our next steps, so later this evening, we'll be back for the first reading for the acceptance and the appropriation of the grants on September 24th. We'll come back for the acceptance of a property transfer from the Lynchburg City School Board, public hearing to dedicate the open space easement for part of the property, and the second reading for acceptance and the appropriation of the grants. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions or comments? Vice Mayor?
I just want to say, this would be a welcomed addition to the Four Hill community, and I'm looking forward to hearing any more public feedback we may have. But did have one person who did express a question mark, saying, we didn't ask for Dog Park, why are you bringing it? I gave him my commitment I would voice that here, and I have done so. But needless to say, thank you for bringing this forward and looking forward to voting on it in the future.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Oh, sorry, Mr. Woody.
I guess they're not here. Water resources, because I think we talked about some of the issues. So this doesn't affect what was brought up with regarding water resources, being able to extend the lines and whatnot. That was millions of dollars of extra, I think you mentioned, at the sewer. College Park. Gotcha. Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to say, this next one, the deer population reduction is quite the hot topic. I just want to let her know, the people who have been really excited about this one, I was, we were at the national night out. The chief and I were confronted by some of our well-seasoned, I'll call residents, two ladies that are very excited about their ability to possibly help control the population. So I'm going to hand it over to you, Chief, and see what you have to say.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm going to turn this over to our Chief Animal Warden, Ryan Ball, to talk about, we're really here to present you kind of what we're doing right now, what some of the options may be, and get some direction from all of you on where you'd like to see this go. With us tonight, as well as Chief Animal Warden, Ball, we have several other folks who are kind of experts in the field. That way, we can hopefully answer any questions you may have and not have to come back again to follow up on those. Those folks are retired Lieutenant Matt Gillespie in the back. He works as one of our trainers and our training unit and is kind of our firearms expert locally. And then with the Department of Wildlife Resources, we have Sergeant, oh, sorry, Sergeant Corey Harbor with the Conservation Police, Officer Jacob America also with the Conservation Police, and then Ms. Sarah Peltier, who's a district wildlife biologist, Ms. Katie Martin, who is a deer, bear, and turkey biologist, as well as Zach Adams, who is a region two hunter education coordinator. So if this group of people can't answer the questions you have, I don't know who will be able to answer them. So I'm going to turn it over to the Chief Animal Warden. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council, happy to be here. Apologize for not being able to be here last month. The stomach bug went through my house pretty ferociously. Much rather would have been here. So apologize for that. First, I want to thank the members of the Department of Wildlife Resources for being there and making themselves available for any questions that you may have today. So let me dive in. So the purpose is to propose options to city council to help decrease the city's deer population. I see it. Which one, the right?
Let me help you. Let's see the picture.
Oh, I need the point. Is that what I'm doing?
I don't know. For a reason. Here we go. See that that's clicked.
So it wasn't me?
No, no, no. Somehow I've messed it up. So let's see here.
There you go. Thank you. Oh, I thought it was more of the applause.
Yay.
All right. Why the deer population in Lynchburg has created significant citizen complaints. I've been in this position for a little over seven years, and that's been a constant thing through emails, phone calls. I can tell you that's been a complaint, not just in the Moonsboro area, but all over the city is deer complaints, whether it be from deer lingering in people's yards, deer eating people's bushes and flowers, deer defecating in people's yards to where they can't walk around, creating significant just quality of life issues. The other thing is that I intimately know is that they bring off a lot of tick-borne diseases. Fall last year, I actually got alpha galleon and rocking mountain spotted fever. I can tell you, it's really affected my quality of life over the last nine months. I've gotten calls from people over the last six months just telling me how they've gotten alpha galleon, different things like that. It's really affected people's quality of life, and that comes straight from the deer population that we have. I will say that Lynchburg is not the only one with a deer population problem. That is a regional thing, if not statewide thing. Lynchburg is not the only one that's susceptible to it. So to go forward, we created some options, and this is, just to be straight up front honest, this is, sorry about that. This is not going to eliminate the deer population overnight. It's going to be a long-term plan to try to help mitigate some of the population issues that we have and try to also encourage more hunters to come into the city to help us with this issue. So some of the options are strengthening the ban on deer feeding to include a year-round ban. This would not be a criminal fine or criminal penalty. This would be a warning and then a civil fine. What we, I came to city council approximately two years ago, I believe it was October of 2022, trying to get a year-round feeding ban, and we weren't able to get it done that year. However, one of the big benefits of that is when we're feeding deer or anybody in our neighborhoods are feeding deer, it habituates the deer to be around our houses, to be around people, and not be fearful of them. I live just outside of the city limits. I know all of my neighbors, none of us feed deer. When I see the deer in the, in the wood line, and they see me come out on the deck, and I, the wood creaks on my deck, they see me and they run. And the city is not like that at all, because we have a ton of people feeding deer. I go to these complaints every month, and I have to tell people, you know, this is what it's doing to your community, this is what it's, the problems that are your help. They're doing it out of goodwill, because they want to see the deer, and they feel like the deer need help being fed. But there's a lot of downsides to it as well. So I really think a year-round ban for a civil fine would be really helpful. I actually went to a property off of Ford Avenue in the Sandusky area about a month and a half ago. There was a female that was feeding all sorts of wildlife. I literally went back there, and it was like a scene from Dr. Doolittle. There was literally species of animals everywhere, because there were so many different tree stands with food, food all over the ground. It was the perfect place for everything wildlife in Lynchburg to be present for. The problem that she wasn't happy about was the coyotes were coming, and they were feeding off all the food that she was putting out. Not only that, but all the animals that are coming to feed off that food source. So the coyotes are coming because not only do they get the food that she's putting out, but she's, the coyotes are getting all of the animals. They get to hunt in one little central area. And then the people call because they see a coyote activity that is more present because they're drawn to that specific area. So we get complaints that way as well. The other problem with people feeding not just deer, but birds in excess, there's nothing wrong with feeding birds and bird feeders, but I've seen people feed to excess, to where they have 50, 30, 30, 40, 50 bird feeders, like really going excessive, and they're, they're drawing in bear and different things like that, creating all sorts of issues. So just trying to get a ban on feeding deer, I really think that would help a lot of our issues long-term. Like I said, it won't be a quick fix, but it will help things long-term. Another thing that we thought of as a possible option is eliminating the 12-foot deer stand for larger properties, on properties 10 acres or more. The reason I don't suggest that on smaller parcels is I try to be pretty liberal. I'm, I'm the one for the city who looks at all the properties that people put in for deer, for hunting permits for the city, just to look and see if it's reasonably safe for them to bow hunt from a elevated position. I don't feel that on a parcel 10 acres or less, that if you lower the deer stand height requirement, that that would make it much safer. I feel like that would be a lot less safe, especially for those neighborhoods where you can fit in hunters to those neighborhoods, especially the back wooded, lotted areas. But if you minimize the height requirement for those smaller parcels, I don't think that would be a good thing for public safety. The third thing is increased promotion for urban archery. It's kind of more or less, in my experience, to be a secret. I'll be honest, when I started with the city 14 and a half years ago, I didn't even know that we had urban archery. And I was in animal control. I certainly didn't supervise the unit, but I had no idea that we had an urban archery program in the city. I didn't know that you were allowed to hunt the city. I still run into people all the time that call about deer complaints that don't know that we have hunting in the city. So if there's a way that we could promote that, I know we have tons of excellent people who do promotion with the city, I think that might be a way to help promote hunting with, specifically in the city. Another option is allowing bow hunters to hunt on specifically city-owned properties that's currently not allowed by city code. City code currently only allows it to be for private properties. Obviously, I'm not talking about parks or anything like that. I'm not suggesting that people, we allow people to hunt in Peaksview Park or anyplace like that. That would obviously be a big public safety issue, but we can find certain parcels. I've been on GIS. I'm, I feel like I'm on GIS every day permitting bow permits and stuff like that. There is a ton of city property that's heavily wooded, or at least very, much so wooded, that I feel like might be a good possibility to allow people to get in and hunt and decrease the deer population that way. The last option is encourage citizens just to contact DWR, Department of Wildlife Resources, and just tell them what issues they're having with damage to their property and inquire and apply for kill permits. That's not to say that they'll receive one, but just to inquire about receiving one, applying and receiving one after our hunting season is over. Just so y'all are aware, the hunting season actually just started last weekend. So it goes from the beginning of September to the end of March every year. So there's seven months that you can hunt, bow hunting inside the city each year, which is great if you're a hunter. So there's, there's tons of opportunity to hunt. Expected action, just bringing this back before council if necessary for any changes to options. Maybe some of y'all have some options or any added recommendations. I would really love to strengthen the ban on deer feeding in the city. I would, I actually, right before I came, I just looked at the locality map for Virginia that has locality bans on deer feeding year-round, and half the, it may not be 50%, but it's very, very close. Half the state approximately has a locality ban on feeding deer year-round, half the state. And also to vote to approve any options council feels will be beneficial to help reduce deer population in the near future. With that, if you have any specific questions, I'll be allowed to answer. If I can't answer, like I said, my expertise is more animal-controlled domesticated ant dogs, cats, that kind of thing, but I have a wonderful team from the state that can help me answer any questions that y'all may have.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor Paul.
Sure. Would you mind going back? I don't know if it was one slide or two slides. That one, yeah, options. A little bit of feedback, at least from, from me. I remember talking about a, the 12-foot deer stand rule might be a little bit something I'd like to. get some action on, to use the term of your presentation. If we can lower that to some regard, because most decks are, I think, eight foot to 10, they're not 12. So if you have the property and you're in a position where you can bow hunt safely on your property, but you don't want to set up a deer stand, would that get us around that? I don't know. That might be something we can work through over the next few weeks as we're getting ready to vote on it. Can I just go for a moment and then, whether we talk about it now, later, whatever works for you all, I just wanted to give some feedback if I could. The bow hunting on specific city-owned properties, I'm all for it. I think it's a great idea. I think there's also opportunity here to make, whether it's a permit you would issue or not, I don't know, but if there would be opportunity for our neighbors in other localities to pay a fee to come into the city to do it, I think that's also prudent to consider just because that's more folks, you know, providing this service is how I see it. What was the other one? The, can you talk a little bit about your, when you go to a property and they want to bow hunt? You said if you determine it's not safe, can you talk about what that process looks like?
Sure. So a lot of times it's big enough to where I can just look on Google Earth and city GIS and just base it off of that. So what I'm looking for is enough trees, enough area to where it's not, you know, if there are areas to where their neighborhoods, where the houses are right up on top of each other, I'm generally not going to issue bow permits for those properties unless it's extenuating circumstances like all of the people or several people in a row and maybe a couple behind them all want to get in on a permit. So they all want to get permitted together, and they're all fine with it, and they have some trees there to be able to be able to be elevated and do it safely, and they're all on board with it. Now, if there's properties to where they all back up to woods and they're half acre or more lots, I generally will just bow permit those or permit those for bow hunting based on they have trees that they can actually use a tree stand to be elevated, to shoot down, and do it safely and with that kind of thing. The larger properties, acres or more, as long as it's somewhat wooded, at least somewhat wooded, those are generally very easy to permit. Does that tell?
It does. I mean, because, and I didn't lead with this question because I think it was a little too firm, but the thought was like, okay, well, what's the effective range of a bow? Like, do we really need to go to that round? But I don't, I don't think we do. On average, I mean, how many permits do you deny versus approve, like?
Very few that I deny. I actually brought the numbers so I can tell you. Hold on one second. So as of today, right an hour before I came, I have issued for this season so far 203 permits. Last hunting season, I issued 346.
Then that was for the total season. This is just starting out.
Right. So I would say by the, probably mid-season for this season, I'll probably get to around 350, if not a little bit more, just because a lot of people don't like to hunt when it's still kind of warm. So I'll probably still get to about 350.
Okay. Last two comments, and I'd be happy to yield back. So the year-round ban, I have a couple constituents who are very in favor of it. I'm still working my way through it. It's something that you all are clearly making a priority, and I do want to give credence to that. But I would be interested to hear what my colleagues and maybe even what the general public thinks on that front. I don't want to limit someone's ability to do certain things, but I also am trying to balance the community as well. The final comment I had about this, can we loop in the coyote component into this conversation at all? Because that, I mean, I have continued concerns in Sandusky, as you know. We've gone back and forth in various emails on it. I mean, the coyote concern continues. Sure, we want to nip the bud on the deer, and maybe that's an extra way to come after the coyote problem, but can you speak to it?
Sure. So my biggest thing would be as long as we can figure out a way to do it where public safety is in the best interest of it, that would be the purview of council, obviously, to make a decision based off that. If you want my personal opinion, I certainly wouldn't want it on these smaller parcels, just because.
Forgive my density, wouldn't want what on your?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want people, sorry, coyote hunting on these smaller parcels to where they're in smaller neighborhoods, that kind of thing. They shoot a coyote, it's not a kill shot, and now the coyote, the coyote is very much likely to run underground, but we don't know that. I mean, there are times where maybe it won't, and maybe it runs into someone's pet next door or two houses down. There's a lot of variables, and I just, if it were me living in that neighborhood where the houses are a lot closer, I would personally feel uncomfortable on smaller parcels. So with that, that would be council's purview on what they want to decide. I would personally not want them on smaller parcels. If y'all want to do that on larger parcels, you know, I can certainly be involved in that conversation to give you my opinions on what I feel is safe and or safer. I just, at this moment, I don't feel like that's, I wouldn't feel comfortable with it on the smaller parcels. Beyond that, honestly, I've talked to a lot of bow hunters, because I've had a lot of bow hunters call me as well over the last couple of years as well, and they also want coyotes on there as well, and I've heard this quite a bit. And I've actually asked quite a few of them, you know, how many times have you actually seen a coyote come under your tree stand while you're up there that you would have actually been able to get a good shot on? I've only had one person tell me yes to one time. So do I honestly think that they're going to be able to do that effectively with a bow? It's possible, but it's probably a very small chance. I could be wrong, but I just, I don't think it's of a high likelihood that that's a very big possible.
Thank you for the dialogue, and the final component I would offer is all of these considerations would be for a bow.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. And if I can just circle back to a couple of the first things.
Sure.
If I can, okay. I actually went and looked at the height stands for deer stands for a lot of the localities. There's quite a few, honestly, there's probably a dozen or 18 that don't have any height restrictions. The majority, though, do have 10- or 12-foot height stand requirements. There's one, Martinsville, that has seven feet. I don't know where they got seven feet from. I didn't call and ask them, but the overwhelming majority, looking at this paper that I printed off right now, probably about 25, 30 different localities similar to ours, the overwhelming majority are 10 to 12 feet, with the majority being 10. So just so you're aware on that. And what was the second one that you had? I apologize, I forgot in the moment.
Oh, forgive me. I'll probably have to go back and watch the tape to recall, and I'll email you. But I would say 10 feet below. I'm not a hunter in that regard, so I'll check with some of my friends, but 10 seems better than 12.
Yeah, I apologize. There was one thing I was going to add, but I can't remember what the second part was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Miss Jones?
Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate the time you put into that. Winter, did we talk about this?
A couple times.
Yeah, I mean. Appreciate, appreciate you putting an effort on bringing this forward. So the biggest question that I have, and I've got a few, is can you explain the process for getting a property permitted? And then does the individual have to get permitted as well? How's that work? So let's say you have, I have a property that's safe to bow hunt on, I want to do it. Can you explain how that would be done?
Yes. So for the first-time process, if they've never been permitted before, what I either have them do is I have them fill out a form and have the owner of the property email it or send it to my office, or they can call my office number and get me all their information, and then I verify with GIS, go out to the house if need be, or look on GIS or Google Earth and permit it, send it to their house as well as email. But I verify with the actual property owner. Sometimes the bow hunter, if it's not going to be the actual property owner, if they have a bow hunter that they want to come on and do that, sometimes they'll give me all the information, and then I call them and verify it that way. After the first initial permit and it's a renewal, I usually just allow the bow hunter at that point, just to make it easier, tell me they want to have it re-permitted. And then by that point, I already have the property owner's information. I just go back on GIS, make sure it's still the same ownership and that kind of thing, and then double-check Google Earth, see if anything's changed, make sure the property's had, because sometimes every once in a while, things change, whether it be the parcel size or different things like that. Just make sure everything's the same and then send it back out that way, whether it be through email or through mail. Does that answer?
I think so. Just to make your understanding, so the, is it the hunter that's permitted, the property that's permitted, or both?
So it's the property that's permitted. So the only thing that's different for the city is that the property gets permitted to say that it's reasonably safe to bow hunt from an elevated position. From that point, the property owner has to sign the form once they get it and then hand it to the owner. If it's not going to be the actual property owner hunting, they sign, give it to the person who's going to hunt, and then they keep it on their person while they are hunting.
So I get approved. Larry calls me, Larry wants to come bow hunt on my property. I just let him use the permit with my property, so that's on him when he's.
If he's hunting on your property, then he would have to do everything that DWR requires. So get a hunting permit, get all the tags, follow bag limits, follow the regulations.
That's state.
Yes.
Those are state regulations.
Right.
Excellent. Okay. So that answers that question, and appreciate you walking me through that because I don't think I've ever really been walked through it before. The, there's a lot of good things in this. I think I love the idea of opening up city property to doing this. You know, there's two things I can think of specifically that I've experienced when I was working a fire station in Old Gras and Road. We found a 3D archery target behind the station in the trees, and somebody in the Kenwood Square apartment complex was practicing from the third floor, from their balcony. And plenty elevation, it was probably totally safe, but we had to get it shut down. But so there's plenty of people out there itching to do these things. So if we give them a place to do it, they won't do things like that, which is what I look forward to. And, you know, the other thing too is, and I think with Mr. Gillespie in the room, he can probably give us a little bit of insight into this. Was there ever a program with law enforcement where you guys would come in at night and take care of some? You mind letting?
I actually ran this program up until 2020, if you'd like me to discuss it.
Yeah. I'd love to get some insight on how that used to go.
Yeah. So we had this program up until March of 2020, and I can, I have the numbers for the last four years of it. So from April of 16, 2016, to April of 2017, 404 deer were culled. And then the following year, from April 17 to April 18, 288 were culled. By say cold, I mean deer, or kill, sorry. April 18 to April 19, 211 deer were culled. April of 19 to March 12, 2020 is when we stopped the program, was 194 deer culled. The reason that that number kind of dwindled over the last three years is because we were using two rifles, and one was a 17, which is a smaller rifle than the state wanted us to use. They wanted us to use a .23 caliber or higher. The problem with that was the only other rifle that we had for hunting, or for, sorry, calling deer is what we were doing, not hunting, is that the 308, even with the suppressor or suppressor on there, it's still very loud. So if you were to go on a large property and see eight deer, if you use the 308, you better pick the biggest deer you get or a doe and pick one because the other seven are gone by the time. Where with the 17, it's so quiet, you pick off, you know, half or three, four of them. So that was the reason the numbers dwindled. The other problem with that, and a big part of why I did not believe that was really benefiting us as a program, is the main complaints that we were getting, especially in the Boonsborough area, are those tight-knit neighborhoods. And we were not able to safely get in there safely with rifles, even if they're suppressed, and get in there and safely shoot deer and know that we have a good backstop. Liability-wise, that was, that would have been a huge liability going into those neighborhoods and trying to safely call deer. We could do it very, very good on 501, where you have the, pretty much the natural barriers with the grass and the hills. Had a lot of property owners that had 20-plus acres in the Boonsborough area where we're able to call a lot of deer. However, those are on the outskirts of the city, and it didn't really have much of an effect on where the real complaints were actually coming from. And honestly, I can tell you, after the four years, because that program's stopped for four years, we're having the same issues in the same areas where we culled. And when we were still having the program, the four years I oversaw it, even with us having that program, I still saw the same issues every single day. So when you probably estimate that we had, I would estimate that we probably have 10,000 deer plus, and that's probably a low-ball figure for how many deer in the city, and you're only taking out 200 to 400 deer, you're not really making much of a dent, especially if it's not where much of your complaints are coming from. So I didn't really feel like it was effective. The other issue that we had with that program is that we were hiring hourly employees. So you're paying people 10, 11, 12 bucks an hour. It's their second or third job, it's really hard to keep those people. So we had a really difficult time keeping those people on board and having people that we trusted with rifles to go around at night with two people and call deer and do it safely to where no one's going to get hurt. And then, you know, we had one person get hurt stepping into a hole in the middle of the night. Even with the headlamp, they fell into a hole and got really hurt and had to leave the program. We ended up having to backfill that with sworn personnel. That got very expensive. We carried on for another year or so, I believe, and just the cost got really exorbitant. And we just, based off that and still having the same number of complaints and not really being able to get to the really, the crucial part of where the complaints were coming from, we didn't really feel like that was a beneficial way to use the city's resources and money to use that program anymore.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation, and I also would like to see if there's a way we could get the coyotes added to it. I know that's an issue. Are we immune here from things that are said? I had a neighbor that doesn't live, and I don't think he lives in Virginia anymore.
Sure.
And I think I told you this story, and the deck, the back of the deck's probably 14 feet off the ground because it's so steep going back to the creek. And he told me, he said, we used to have a coyote problem. I said, really? And he said, yeah. And I said, what happened? And he said, I took care of it. And I said, I didn't hear anything. So he took care of it, and we'll leave it at that. But it would be beneficial for people to be able to do that, have a lawful way to take care of that, that issue.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. In the interest of time, we'll take another question and then move on. Councilman Miss Jones? I mean, Councilman Hungerson?
Thank you. Thank you, Winter, for bringing this back up. I'm reading my email that I sent you June 22nd, and so thank you for where we can actually, because the deer are, they're everywhere. And so with that, I have been a longtime deer hunter, bow hunter, and I'm actually, my proudest shot, but my worst shot, was when I did shoot a fox with my bow. And after I shot him, I thought, why did I do that? I shot a red fox. But anyway, I've shot lots of deer, been a longtime deer hunter. The bow hunters, I think we can easily remove that 12-foot, I mean, especially on 10 acres. Lower it to something more reasonable. Lots of stands that people are buying, you know, when you're looking at a bow hunter, when you're shooting off an arrow, it's not like a bullet that's 50 cents or a quarter. You have a broadhead, you have the arrow, you're looking at 35 bucks just in. And so you, when a bow hunter is not wanting to shoot it like Robin Hood, they're shooting it down so they can make sure they get their arrow and their broadhead back. and their broadhead back safely and without wasting 35 bucks. Who knows what it is now? It's been years since I bought one. But, so shooting down, bow hunters are usually, and to answer Chris's question, usually no longer than 35 yards. I mean, it's a, I'm sure if you're using crossbows now and whatnot, you can go farther. But they're usually shooting down. You're doing it intentionally. We've got to do something to actually incentivize or help people to get out there quickly. Years ago, people used to get turned down a lot. So I'm glad that you're not turning down permits. It used to be a rigmarole. We're now to the point that there are deer everywhere, doesn't matter where. So we have to do lots of things. The only thing that I do not like out of those four, the three, I'm happy for. The feeding the deer is just, it's, it's, I think to me, it's a barking dog. It's not really, I'm sure there's a person or two that's gonna throw out bags of corn. But now we have to go, instead of actually shooting and culling deer, you're out there giving fines to somebody, or you're trying to interpret, did they put out too much feed for the squirrels? Or was it, you know? So I think I would rather us focus on trying to figure out a way that we can really incentivize. You know, having 10 acres is a lot of, I think it's the five acres where you permit the property, correct?
You're talking about just for general?
Just a general permit.
No, there's no endpoint, it's just what I, what I.
What you see is safe.
What I see is relatively safe.
Because it used to be, people used to have to put properties together.
And if I had to estimate, I'd say it's probably less than five that I deny every year. And that's maybe because it's like .4, .14 of an acre.
And with that, I mean, you have more and more deer and less and less hunters. And so, you know, whatever we can do, having them be able to have those kill permits, having them on the city property, I think is great. The only thing that I would, would remove from that is the banning, because then it's a whole new day. It's now you're having to go out and find people and it's a civil penalty and making a criminal out of somebody who's feeding their cardinals or squirrels. So the rest of those items, I'm in total agreement. And the more that we can allow that, I think the better.
Councilor Dolan?
Yeah, I just want, I thank you very much for that report. I hope that we can do something that will be effective. And I also think that perhaps the dog leash law might have something to do with the population that we have. My other question is, what are we gonna do about the bear? I mean, we have a number of pretty good-sized bears running around in our area. I sent you all some pictures of one that was right at my daughter's front door on Running Cedar.
For, and then why I'm passing that off is, we actually, for bears, we generally just assist them and how we deal with that. But they usually run the show in terms of bear stuff, unless it's an immediate threat.
Good question. Good afternoon. My name's Sarah Peltier. I'm a district wildlife biologist with DWR. Deal with a lot of bears, certainly here in the city of Lynchburg. So no surprise to us as staff that they do show up. Bears are very opportunistic. They have an incredible sense of smell. So they're drawn into homes and communities because of that sense of smell. They're following their nose to the next meal. And they're looking for easy food sources, so things like trash, bird feeders, dog food, cat food, whatever we leave out unintentionally, but sometimes intentionally, you know, bears will find that. And they're very adaptable. So while it may seem out of the ordinary to know that there are bears in the city of Lynchburg, they can live in and amongst us, and they do do so. As an agency, we have a wildlife conflict helpline that I know Ryan does a really good job of promoting within the city. We want people to tell us when they're seeing bears, when they're having conflicts with bears especially, so that we can be proactive and try and reach out in those communities, whether it's making site visits, phone calls, or physical, going out on those properties to talk with those people and educate them on how to coexist with bears. Because they're here and they're probably not going anywhere. And with the ordinances in the city, there's no bear hunting that's allowed. So unfortunately, removal of those animals is, you know, your hands are a little bit tied. But we, as an agency, want to hear more about bear activity in the city, again, so that we can be proactive and try and mitigate those conflicts before they could escalate. Because it just takes a couple of times for a bear to get into a trash can, a lot like what Ryan was saying with the coyotes or deer. They become habituated, they start to lose their natural fear of humans. And so they're more comfortable around us. And that's not something that we want. And there are a lot of tools that the public can use to scare bears, to secure attractants. And so we want folks to come to our agency to learn more about that. I hope that answers your question a little bit.
Something might be helpful if the city were to do some sort of PSA, so that the public knows, knows some of the stuff that they don't currently know about how, you know, what they should do, what they should not do.
Right.
I can tell you, I walk with an air horn, because I had a little altercation up at Winnebago, very close to a bear one day, so I, a little bit.
Yeah, and that's something that, you know, I can work with Ryan on, no problem. We've got tons of information on our website, whether it's social media, holding public meetings or forums. Those are things that we'd love to do, and we do all the time. So absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much, Officer Ball.
You said there's no bear hunting in the city, so that means you have to work alone?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, yes.
My takeaway from the options is to work on the second bullet as far as what we would propose, and maybe that's an options thing. The coyote piece, I don't know how we can turn that around. We want to do this, obviously, we're starting the season. So to the degree that we can maybe have the coyote be a part of this, we'll try. But my, I think my marching orders, or at least what I understand, is that we're talking about this, we're now, right, starting the season, want to make sure that we're moving out into space and we can do that as early as your next meeting, have it prepared. So I'm gonna work with the one, two, the, not the first bullet, but those bullets down and kind of work on the height and go from there. And if I can somehow figure out the coyote piece, I'll do what I can. But focus on the deer for now, is that okay with council?
Just if I may add, predators fall prey. And so you get rid of the prey, those predators are gonna.
They didn't, they weren't here until we had so much prey.
Right.
Sure.
Is it okay?
Thank you.
If you can safely take down a coyote while you're getting the deer, get the coyote.
I will do my best and figure.
Sounds like the recommendation.
Don't slow down on progress you made.
Right, alright.
Sounds like the recommendation for the coyote also was, according to Officer Ball, was the size of the property, so that would be.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Moving on. Approval of the allocation of the Home ARP funds from HUD. This item will appear before council for action on September 24, 2024. Ms. Melville-Walker.
Good afternoon, Mayor Reed, Vice Mayor Feraldi, and members of city council. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, provided $5 billion of supplemental home funds known as the Home Investment Partnership American Rescue Plan, referred to as Home ARP, across the nation to assist individuals or households who are homeless, at risk of homelessness, and other vulnerable populations. The purpose of HUD funding, providing these funds to the city and cities across the nation is to reduce homelessness and increase housing stability. The funds were to be used for housing development, tenant-based rental assistance, supportive services, and non-congregate shelters. To receive these funds, the city had to develop and submit to HUD a Home ARP allocation plan. City staff coordinated and developed the allocation plan. One of the major partners in this process was the Central Virginia Continuum of Care. The city's plan was approved by council on January 24, 2023, which designated the funds for rental housing development. City staff then issued a request for proposals application. The Community Development Advisory Committee, CEDAC, met on March 29 and recommended approval of one of the, of the one application that was received from Rush Homes for the development of Carolyn's Place on Pinehurst Street. There is $1,348,624 of construction funds available for this project. A public hearing is scheduled to be conducted by council on September 24 to review the CEDAC recommended project application for the development of Carolyn's Place.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Comments? No? Yes? Okay, thank you so much, we appreciate it. Okay, moving on to the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAPER, Program Year 2023, Fiscal Year 2024. Oh, you're staying up here, yes. This item will appear before council for action on September 24, 2024. Ms. Melville-Walker, again.
Okay, city staff has prepared the draft Program Year 2023, Fiscal Year 2024 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, known as the CAPER, for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Program. The CAPER provides the accomplishments that have been made on the various subrecipients and city departments for the CDVG and Home Program and the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act CARES Funds, known as the CDVG CV Funds, that have been expended during this program year, which again is from July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2024. The report is required by the Citizen Participation Plan for these programs. The public comment period began on September 6 and will conclude at the city council public hearing. A public hearing will be conducted on September 24, and a final approval of the CAPER by city council will be completed for submittal to HUD.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from council on that? No? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, moving on to Fiscal Year 2024 Fourth Quarter and Fiscal Year 2025 First Quarter Adjustments. This item will appear before council for action on September 24, 2024. Ms. Donna Witt.
Thank you. So I've got quite a mouthful here, so we're gonna kind of do a brief overview and then just happy to answer any questions. So these are our fourth quarter adjustments for fiscal year '24 and then first quarter adjustments for 2025. And so for our fourth quarter adjustments, these are really clean up in order to finish the fiscal year. So for our Children's Services Act, we received more revenue from the state in the Children's Services Act program, but there is a local match. So we are required to do that local match, so we need to clean that up at the end of the year. We got additional state aid for the Library of Virginia. So again, appropriating that money to clean up that grant. And then also for the International Festival, every year we get sponsorships. And so we carry those forward into the next year. We have now set that program up in the grant fund so that they will automatically carry forward. So this is the last year, if all works well, that we'll have to do that. And our City Federal State Aid Fund, this is really a true-up of these grants. The Forest Sustainability Fund, we received some additional funding for universal drug testing and also for special events. And then the Children's Services Act Fund, the CSA Fund, that's the other side of the entry to clean up that general fund that's gonna appropriate that money there. In the Water Capital Projects Funds, we did receive additional funding for the Virginia Department of Health to fund the inventory of the lead services lines. Y'all, Tim's been here to present on that. But we hadn't received those funds to appropriate them, so we now have received those. And they're in the Water Capital Projects Funds, so they will carry forward there to be used in future periods. And then in the Fleet Services Fund, we had to use some reserves in that fund for the cost of replacement vehicles due to inflation, and the majority of those were public safety. So in our first quarter adjustments for 2025, we had a number of things that we wanted to clean up. We did receive the additional dedicated revenue. There's the 3% that came for constitutional officers. We don't do that in our regular budget adoption, because we wait, you know, the state's so long getting theirs adopted. We wait until the state fund is completely adopted to make sure we only have to do it once. So this does require a local match for the city, so that's $28,538, but we received $220,000. In Human Services, these are additional dedicated revenues that we receive for these programs. There is no local match. There is one new full-time position that utilizes view funds. We like to bring any new position to council to make sure that it's approved when it's added, but it is fully funded with state view funds. And then also for 2025, we've received additional funds from the Library of Virginia as state aid, and we need to true that up. Also, for the general fund use of remaining funds. So these are either new initiatives that are being brought forth or projects that were appropriated in 2024 that did not get completed. So for Parks and Recreation, we've got $59,000 for the spray ground and splash pad and new registration software. The Police Department, we've got a number of new initiatives that we need to do for the Police Department. They did have funds left over in their budget, so we're trying to get some things done. Also, the biggest part of this 1.2 million is for E911. They have not updated their servers as they should have, and we need to get that done pretty quickly. So now that E911 is under the Police Department, there's, they're really looking at everything to make sure we get that in tip-top shape. So that's part of that 1.2 million. For Public Works, an Assistant Director of Public Works position was approved in the budget, but not the vehicle for them, so we're gonna add a vehicle for that Assistant Director. And then there's a transfer to the City Federal AIDS Fund. That's a true-up of the Arts and Cultural Grant that we do every year. Now, general fund use of unassigned fund balance. So this $30,142, I know council has been updated on this. This is funds that would increase council salaries by $4,000 each. This was put into place, adopted by city council in 2019. COVID hit, we had to completely redo that budget, and so council voted not to receive that increase. Well, state code did not get, or city code did not get updated, but held those same $14,000 for council members and $16,000 for the mayor. So that stayed in city code. So this is requesting that we use $30,000 of unassigned fund balance, which is one-time money, but to get salary, council salaries correct based on city code. And that will be then budgeted in '26 going forward based on council adoption. And we can discuss that. So let me finish and then we'll go back. General fund use of reserve balance, the Technology Fund, there's an agreement with council and IT that we put any additional funding left in the IT budget to projects. There was $106,000. And also, we're taking the reserve that we have for the public safety building and actually moving it to City Cap for that project. They're ready to do the FFNE that's part of that project, and we're gonna use this $3.6 million to do that. So this will transfer that money for their use. In other funds, this is really a cleanup of our grant fund. In the Community Development Block Grant, this is additional funding that they received. Forfeited assets, we cannot budget. So when they receive those funds later on, we appropriate those based on their requested use. So that's what we've done. In Home, we actually appropriated too much, so we're rescinding a little bit to true up that Home Grant. In the Detention Fund, we're using a little bit of their reserve for a worker's compensation payment. The Technology Fund, there are some additional projects to use money that's already in that fund. And then the Capital Projects Fund, we had some various projects, and they're listed in your attachment A to true up some projects with, mostly with VDOT funding. We received about $8.2 million in revenue share fund that we need to appropriate the local match, which we will use the line of credit for that. This is the other half of the Hollins Mill Road Bridge. So we had appropriated the first half when we got revenue share. We weren't anticipating applying for that additional revenue share until 2027, but we got the money early, so we need to go ahead and appropriate that. And then they'll do the project based on when it falls in the CIP, but we will have that funding. So that's the biggest chunk of that. And then we also received some money for the Lynchburg Industry Phase II Project. That was over a million dollars, but that was also VDOT funding. So then we also had the Airport Capital Grant Project. So then we also have the Airport Capital Grant Project Fund where we did receive additional funding for the runway rehab. And then in Fleet Services, again, we're going to use some reserves due to inflation for vehicles and also the cost to install the heavy-duty lift. So those are the big pieces. And just a quick summary, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from council? No? Okay, thank you very much. Oh, Vice Mayor Feraldi.
I don't think we should skip over this topic without having some debate or discussion about the merits of it. My colleagues would indulge me. I did prepare something to say on it because I feel so strongly on it. I am very pleased with a lot of the things that this body has done. Public safety comes front of mind multiple years in a row. Cost of living adjustment for city employees, that hadn't been done consistently for 10-plus years. Jobs to the city, economic growth, economic activity, increasing teacher pay. Quite a plethora of really good initiatives. And yet, there's still a lot more work to be done. Education, infrastructure. I submit that we do have a school to save, teachers to pay, enrollment to increase or make more competitive to our private counterparts, graduation rates to improve, and a boatload of buildings to maintain. I personally checked, or last time I checked, I think it was approximately $500 million worth of sewer needs under our roads, our streets that need to be replaced or amended or maintained. And not to mention a hundreds of millions of dollars worth of a combined sewer overflow project that has taken quite a long time that needs to conclude. There's a lot here. And this doesn't even list mental health, affordable housing, cost of living, taxation, whatever it may be, law and order. There's a lot for us to continue to work on. But I would humbly submit to my colleagues that instead of finding creative solutions to these challenges and these issues, we're here being presented with and now discussing how to give ourselves a 40% pay increase with back pay. Personally, I wanted to know where this came from and if it was requested by members of this body to have the manager bring it forward because I thought the public had to know. And so I asked. And I was surprised to hear that this did come to us from council admissions. Now, I do have a voting record to back up my convictions. I voted opposed to items related to this in the past. And the conviction is that a politician should not vote themselves a pay increase. I just simply, no other words needed to be said on it outside of this. I believe it's wrong. Don't need justification for it. I just believe it's wrong. And yet, for nearly two years, I've heard so much from this dais about fiscal responsibility, prioritizing the taxpayer, standing up to the administration and the bureaucracy, merit and equal opportunity, plenty of platitudes about standing up to bureaucrats and demanding transparency, fighting for the taxpayer, and consistent attacks for any deviation to an extremely limited political dogma of those in my own part. I'd ask those watching at home, do you know anyone receiving a 40% increase in this economy? Worse, do you know anyone who can arbitrarily?
Talk about the fourth quarter.
Point of order, it goes to the city attorney, it doesn't go to you.
Mr. Friedman?
Well, I would make a correction. So, Madam Mayor, the point of orders do go to you and you have the option of looking to me for guidance. Should you want guidance, I'm happy to give it to you, but it sounds like you had made a ruling to proceed and permit him to be able to continue his discussion.
I'm allowing him to finish his statement. Thank you.
I'd ask those watching at home, do you know anyone receiving a 40% increase in their take-home pay in this economy? Worse, do you know anyone at home who can arbitrarily grant it to themselves? Because I don't. But that's exactly what this proposal would do. So here we are, sitting and discussing it. A 40% increase to our own salaries and again with back pay, all on the backs of the taxpayer. So let this all end any continued criticisms over fabricated crises some of this body have perpetrated over the last two years, once and for all. I never want to hear again about how there was a corrupt backroom deal to become Vice Mayor. That's proven to be false. I never want to hear again about whether or not we didn't or did accept lasting tax relief for accomplished nothing to lower the cost of living for citizens in Lynchburg. We've done that. And as a matter of fact, close to all of us voted for the overwhelming portion of that package, including the five Republicans. I don't want to hear anymore about how we fight to eliminate bureaucracy or oppose administrative spending when this 40% pay increase to our own salary literally feeds the bureaucracy. I don't want to hear anymore that the mayor and I are advocates for DEI in City Hall when we now, under a Republican majority, instead have an officer of civil rights in the manager's office. I don't want to hear anymore about who is or isn't a Republican in name only for not subscribing to an illegal tax scheme, even though all five Republicans and our Democrat or independent colleagues, however you would like to identify as in this instance, joined us with the bulk of those votes. It was the first major tax relief package in over a decade. I and the rest of Lynchburg don't want to hear about it anymore because those never-ending false monologues are comically acute, overused, and now prove to be sanctimonious to the core because of this proposal. If a dollar is a dollar and that dollar is the taxpayer, every single appropriation we make with that dollar matters and must be allocated to garner the highest and best use. So I would humbly submit that we should all agree that a 40% pay increase to members of council is not the highest and best use of these dollars. To underscore this as simply as I can, what is being shown to us is approval for continued borderline religious opposition to the most basic core operations of local government and creative solutions to challenging problems, including spurting the local economy through an amphitheater downtown. And I'd like to remind our colleagues and those of the public that voting for that package actually reduced the city debt overall. These are highly critical and outspoken admonishments and they're unwavering, never-ending. Except now. Save only when it seems to line our pocket. And here it is, the very basis of this negative hypocritical and Republican perception of politicians. And I truly find it disgusting. If I haven't spoken plainly enough, I'll conclude by saying this. No Republican or any member of this body who is worth their salt or has any sense of integrity should support this measure. I know I'm not on council to make a buck or name for myself. Time will tell if that proves for the rest of us. We have two readings of this policy, two opportunities where we can be leaders of integrity rather than money-grubbing demagogues clothed in propriety and degradation.
Councilors?
Well, Chris, you didn't speak plainly enough. You spoke enough. You know, that was all probably one of the most impressive pieces of propaganda I've ever heard. So let's talk about the context of the conversation we had. Where to come up? Because we had candidates competing in primaries that were being forced to pay a primary filing fee of, what, 1%? Of what the, whatever the percentage of what the ordinance says. So our treasurer's charging citizens based on what the ordinance says. Right? That's what it is. That's where the conversation started. So we need to be in line. Now, I just think this whole thing, it just shows you what a complete... What's the nicest way to say this without violating our rules of procedure? Contradiction exists here with what the Vice Mayor just stated is that here's somebody who always talks about the rules, the process, the procedures. Mr. Friedman is an ordinance law in the city. An ordinance is law. So by the city failing to pay us in accordance with what the ordinance is saying, the city has violated its own law. So the correction here is to either be with the law, within the law, which I didn't vote to change. I wasn't on council when that became law. I think Mr. Feraldi was. And, you know, when that happened, if you want to change it, change the law. It's that simple. But what good are we if we don't follow our own rules? What good are we if we don't follow our own rules? The ordinance sets the pay. We have candidates paying primary filing fees based off that ordinance, but then the city's not following its own laws. It's that simple. But, you know, if Chris wants to turn this into another, you know, the next episode of, you know, "How Best to Virtue Signal" by Chris Feraldi, well, by all means, we just got to see it. So if you want to learn how to virtue signal, just tune in and watch the Vice Mayor.
Anyone else? Councilman Hobson?
So Donna, you've presented this with the briefing. It's going to be a public hearing because we're looking at $3.6 million. So lots of money that's going in this first quarter adjustments. And based on what I'm hearing, at least one person is going to be voting against all those $3.6 million of adjustments. But we'll have an actual public hearing in a couple weeks where... On the 24th, yep. So maybe that speech can, you know, we can get that to us in recording so we don't have to listen to the chastisement or the scolding or the whatever again. So anyway, but we'll see that. Sorry, I shouldn't have got off on that. But we'll see it in the 24th. We'll have a public hearing on all these adjustments. Thank you.
Yes, Councilor Misses.
I do want to say that I have a sense of humor so I can appreciate a joke when I hear one. So I thank the Vice Mayor for that. And, you know, I enjoyed my conversation with Larry coming down in the elevator today, coming down here. And I'm just glad that I don't get in fights in elevators with people. Chris.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
Well, I don't know what that was in reference to. I will humbly submit, I have a personal conviction that a politician should not vote themselves an increase. No, I was not on council in 2019. If you believe it's okay to vote yourself a 40% pay increase in this economy or any economy, by all means, vote for it. I'm not the one articulating why I think I have the right to pay myself more. I think that's inappropriate. And I have yet to hear justification outside of the fact, well, it's the law. I'd rather change the law and keep it a 10. So let's change the law and keep it a 10. Because then if we need to have a conversation about why it should be 14, let's go, let's talk. We keep it a 10. That's my perspective. No, I would rather this be separated out so I could vote in good conscience. But if there wants to be a poison pill on the entire conversation, then I will be forced by my conscience to vote no.
Councilman Taylor?
Excuse me? Mr. Vice Mayor, you said you weren't on City Council in 2019. I mean, 2019.
Correct.
You weren't, you was not seated on City Council.
Correct.
Well, then I stand corrected on that.
Okay. Well, let's go on to Lifelong Learning Committee. Dr. Holly Jennings.
Mayor, just a quick clarification. What I mainly was working with Mr. Friedman, what I hear is an interest to maybe position this as a separate component of the quarterly adjustments. We'll see where that, because it will require a co-change. If we, to hear the Vice Mayor and where he's headed or where he wants to go. Because of just a quick procedural history, this predates me. 2019, there was a decision made by that body to increase the council member salaries from 14 each to the mayor at 16. Because of what was happening at the time, the current pandemic, there was an interest in a percentage or a portion of that going back to help support the city, not knowing or being at a time of great unknown. In those preceding years, I think I wrote this in my email today, completely unaware of people's salaries and what you were paid. And so we, in those budgets subsequent to my arriving, proposed at the 10 and the 12. We've shown that there was a discrepancy between local code and what we have, what we were doing by way of process. We positioned it as we have as a way in which to meet what's in local code. And if where the body wants to go is not what's been there, that's absolutely fine. And so I asked Mr. Friedman for procedural component here. If the body, it looks like that they want to maybe have a separate conversation about this. Can we pull it out of the quarterly adjustments and have it as a separate item? Or?
So what I would suggest is it sounds like there probably needs to be more discussion on method. In lieu of having this as part of the quarterly adjustments, it might be worth keeping status quo for now, but bringing it as a separate item at the next meeting, either as a budget amendment or as a actual ordinance change, as the Vice Mayor had mentioned. That way, council would have two options to be able to further discuss and choose between.
Mayor, if that's acceptable to you and your peers, I just look, and I don't know if it's appropriate to ask for certain consensus or to have options for you to consider.
There are more people than the Vice Mayor on this body, so I would appreciate it if we get the consensus from the whole body.
Yes, sir, I was asking the mayor for a consensus from the body.
Is the consensus that having two options so that at least those could be discussed versus just one option? At least that way, we can talk through more than one thing. Is that okay with the consensus? And do we feel okay with that, their choices? Yes, not head none? Head none? Okay, then yes, I have at least one.
Thank you, Mayor and your peers, for that direction.
Great. Dr. Jennings, are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council. I am before you this afternoon to discuss the opportunity for council to create a lifelong learning committee. The purpose of this committee would be to explore policy matters that are important to both governing bodies. That would be you guys as well as the school board. It would allow you the opportunity to engage in conversations around those issues and allow you to make recommendations to support high-quality public education. I will tell you, when I was gathering this information to prepare, I did a little research. There are eight other counties and cities around Virginia that have a similar subcommittee between their two boards to discuss similar matters. And I can share some of those with you if you would like to do your own research. The purpose of having a committee like this would be to provide the opportunity for the two bodies to have regular information and updates on important topics. And it would allow you to have more time to talk about those things prior to a decision-making meeting. And a good example of that would be Greg Patrick earlier, providing you guys with an update and then you didn't really have a lot of time to discuss it. This meeting, these meetings would allow you to have a monthly meeting to get these updates and then provide you opportunity to discuss it between the two boards to answer a lot of those questions that you may have around those topics. Speaking of topics, some of the examples that could be brought before you guys, I saw a lot of these things in some of those other committees that I looked at in other localities. Fiscal clarity around budget, capital construction and improvement projects, which you guys were discussing earlier. Student enrollment, which I know is super important. Population, school zoning, talent management, resources. There was a lot of conversation during the budget process around RIF policies and when and how we're hiring people. Instructional excellence. and how we're hiring people, instructional excellence, ASL scores, things like that. And then other items deemed appropriate by the city manager and/or school superintendent as they come up. So the structure of the meetings would be very similar to what you currently have with finance and PDC. There will be three members of city council and three members of the school board on the subcommittee. The members would serve two-year terms. The mayor and the school board chairperson would be ex officio members of those subcommittees. And the mayor and school board chairperson would appoint members from their governing bodies to serve on those committees, very similar to how we do finance and PDC. The meetings would be held the third Tuesday of the month at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock at City Hall in the second floor training room. I do believe that the school board has a meeting already established on that evening, so they would already kind of be coming together and could go to that meeting later that evening. And then the city manager's destiny, which much like Donna, kind of coordinates finance and Gail PDC, I would assist with the lifelong learning committee. Kind of makes sense with my background being in education for over 15 years, I would be able to assist you guys with any of those questions. So the next steps, if at the discretion and direction of council, you are interested in creating this committee, we would need to find out the willingness of the school board and school staff to participate in the committee. And then we would need to prepare a resolution for your next meeting on October 8th to go forward. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Jennings. Questions?
One happy amendment is that, can we go earlier as far as, because now the second meeting in September is not a joint meeting.
Okay. Go earlier as far as?
The vote on the committee itself?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay. I think that's what we had in our head was because the second meeting of this one was proposed as a joint, no longer that, so.
Got it.
Sorry.
Questions from council? Comments from council? Yes, Councilman Dolan.
So is there any concern with having the mayor appoint members, that this could become a partisan kind of committee?
I'm not sure I would be most qualified to answer that question. That would be for you guys to discuss. Just saying.
May I ask a question?
I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers. I'm just saying for any part.
If I may ask a question within that main.
I don't know how else we would appoint someone or gather the membership, because there would be at least, the only alternative I would think of would be four votes of council, which would inherently, so I don't know if you have a solution or not, but that would be my only thought, because I don't know what else.
I get that, yeah. I get that.
I guess you have the same issue in any committee. Councilman Missions?
Yeah, so kind of in response to Ms. Dolan's question, there are concerns because our current mayor has the absolute worst track record in history with committee appointments in the history of Lynchburg city mayors. And that's a fact that the public needs to be reminded about. And she lied about it as well, to people. She lied about not getting the correspondence from me and others about committee appointments when she got her tenure. So let's just remember that there. One question I do have is why, why is it that we're talking about other committees when we don't even have all of our standing committees? We don't have an audit committee in the code of ordinances. Not saying that this committee's good or this committee's bad, has nothing to do with that. But, you know, one of the first bullet points, if you go back to, I think there was a slide that started with, I think it was fiscal clarity. Is that right? Right? You want to get fiscal clarity, you don't put together a select group of insiders to then perpetuate propaganda talking points about fiscal clarity. You actually have the ability to audit, which is what an audit committee would be able to do, and audit the school division to get fiscal clarity, because that power is vested already. Right? But we don't have an audit committee. Right? You know, we just heard the Vice Mayor go on for 10 minutes, maybe longer, I don't know, about the accountability and bureaucracy and all these different things. And he tried to present himself as the champion for himself. Right? And, you know, the reality is, if we want to be able to get to the bottom of what's going on in the school division with finances and other places, having the ability to do auditing directly from the governing body without the bureaucracy is the tool to do that. Right? It's nothing personal. I know all you guys work very hard, you all do great work, and I appreciate what you do. But taking that power that's given to us through our city code and using it to actually get to the bottom of things would be helpful. So that's simply my question, is why are we skipping forward to another committee when we don't even have all of our standing committees? It's that simple. And I will say, I fully expect you to discount what I said about the lie, Madam Mayor, but that's a fact and I can prove it. And I'll be happy to prove it if I need to do so.
Councilman Dolan?
I just want to make it perfectly clear. I in no way implied that Stephanie, our mayor, has done anything improper. I just said for future, for other councils. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
What is the origin of this? Where did this come from?
This was Mr. Feraldi's roll call item a couple of weeks ago, a couple of meetings ago. And we worked to see how that could work for you guys and then brought it forward for you to be able to discuss.
Okay, well, thank you for that very enlightening discussion. And you're always such a hard worker, Dr. Jennings.
Thank you.
I appreciate your help. Okay, Ms. Finney, boards and commissions quarterly reporting. This item will appear before council for action on September 24th, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Sir Vice Mayor, members of council. Our boards and commissions quarterly reporting are meant to increase awareness around council-appointed boards by also giving council ample time to understand the reputation needs for any upcoming vacancies. So diving right in, we'll be reviewing upcoming appointments to our boards listed here with September and October term expirations, as well as any other outstanding vacancies. First up, we have the social service advisory board. This board meets the third Tuesday bi-monthly at noon down at Human Services Building off Ninth Street. This group oversees citizen social welfare and monitors social welfare programs. Members can serve up to two consecutive four-year terms. The volunteer opportunities that we have are one reappointment and two vacancies. Member qualifications that they're looking for for members, really all members will need to help dispel myths of what social services is. You'll be serving a very vulnerable population and advocating with that in mind is very important. Backgrounds for potential candidates would include something in education, experience with the foster system, or kinship care, medical background, or background in housing initiatives. And I do want to note, there is no representation currently for Ward Two or Ward Three on this board. Next is the Lynchburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority. This group meets the third Thursday monthly at 9:30 a.m. at the Housing Authority off Thompson Drive. They administer housing assistance and urban renewable programs. They can serve up to three consecutive four-year terms. The volunteer opportunities that we have here are one reappointment and one upcoming vacancy. First appointed in 2013, Ms. Loretta Spencer has served three consecutive terms and is ineligible to serve again, we think, for her service. This seat has specific qualifications. The position needs to be filled with someone who is directly assisted by the authority. Also, one note, a financial disclosure statement will have to be filed upon serving in this role. Next is the Business Development Center. This meets the second Wednesday of every month at 3:30 p.m. at the BDC off Mill Ridge Road. This group governs the Lynchburg Business Development Center, or the Business Incubator. Regional representation is accepted. Members can serve up to three consecutive three-year terms, and the opportunities we have here are two upcoming vacancies. Regional representation, I'm sorry, is not mandatory. So the two that we have that are turning over are regional, but that doesn't have to be. Citizens with a marketing background are encouraged to apply. The Greater Lynchburg Transit Company meets the first Wednesday of every month at 8:30 a.m. at the Kemper Street Transfer Station. Plus, there's an additional work session, so it equates to about two meetings per month. This group oversees policies and operations of the GLTC. Members can serve up to three consecutive three-year terms. The volunteer opportunities that we have are one current vacancy that we've earmarked for a CVCC affiliate, as well as two members who are eligible for reappointment. And first appointed in 2015, Mary Winston Deacon has served her three consecutive terms and is eligible to serve again. Again, thank her for her service. She is a regional representative here. However, there is nothing tied to this membership making it a regional-only appointment. So all members or all residents are encouraged to apply. Just another note here, we currently have no Ward Three representation. Next is the Lynchburg Parking Authority, although there is no quorum. They would meet the second Tuesday of every month or every other month at 2:30 p.m. in council chamber. I will note that this was before we had moved our PDC and Finance Committee to the 3 p.m. as well. So there might be some conversation we have about moving that meeting. This group plans, develops, and manages public off-street parking. And in March of 2021, House Bill 1768 was passed, changing term lengths from five years to three years with the intent of enticing citizen participation. However, members can still only serve two consecutive terms. With that said, Councilmember Dolan, you will be concluding your second and final term this October, and your vacancy must be filled with a current council member. Other current vacancies are in need of the following backgrounds. Somebody with a major operation requiring parking downtown, or somebody with financial expertise. There is a financial disclosure statement that would have to be filed, again, with my office to serve in this role, and Lynchburg residency is mandatory for this. Another one that, or the last one that we have, and this is one that we brought to you in June, this is the Board of Zoning Appeals. So we, you all decided to reappoint, or this is a court appointment, so you all decided to suggest that Mark Smith be appointed or reappointed. He was appointed in 2006 and is ready for his successor to be named. So I'm keeping this one on radar for anybody who is willing to serve. There's five-year terms, no term limit, obviously, and this group handles appeals and decides on zoning variances. So our next steps, as the mayor said, we'll have a closed session at the September 24th meeting. And I'm collecting applications and resumes through the Friday before that, September 20th. That scan me QR code will get you to our application. And if you are listening still and you are interested and want to know how your expertise could fit into one of these boards, my contact information is in the lower right-hand corner. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Finney. Anybody have any questions or comments about boards, commissions, anyone? How that works? No? Okay. Moving on to roll call, Councilman Hugson.
Hopefully, we can move these two closed session items to tonight since we only got two minutes or a minute, basically, to get roll call.
No, we're going to go ahead and do them, but go ahead, sir.
So under roll call, what I'd like to talk about is the fact that our city assessments or our appraisers, appraisals are coming in pretty high. With that being the case, we're going to be having probably fairly, fairly large, this is a biannual reassessment year. And so with that, we're going to be seeing the fact that the assessments are probably going up quite substantially, 15% to 20% probably. As that's, before that comes forward and before the money is spent on, you know, other projects, I think it would be prudent for us to come out, you know, when you come out with the budget, the November work session that you normally have for a budget retreat, is to be able to present the budget where it says, here's what we're currently budgeted for, and only any increases would have to be actually substantiated. There may be lots of reasons to have those increases. You know, cost of things has gone up and materials or concrete or wood or whatever. But at least having it from the base, having from that base that says, here's what it is without this. Because what's going to happen is, as these assessments come in, it's then going to be on council to say, hey, we're going to set the rate, lower that rate to tax equalization, or we're going to raise the taxes because we want to keep on spending the money. I think before that gets too far down the path, because once people start eyeing the spending of it, it's hard to take it back. And so with that, I think it would be prudent, seeing how those assessments are coming, or the appraisals are coming in, which is going to translate to higher assessments. And before, again, that money is spent, I think it would be prudent to have a budget that says, here's where we are now. In order to get this extra for this department, here's what we have to do. So I think it would make it a little easier for the budget process so it wouldn't have to be council having to say, oh, we want to, we don't want to raise the taxes, so here's what we have to do. Unless somebody said, yep, we want to raise the taxes so we can build a brand-new school. Then that's going to have to be brought forward to say, here's the six cents of tax increase, or here's what we have to do. So I just, I'm seeing that coming forward, and just so, I know the citizens are going to be not looking forward to having their tax bills increased, but that'll be up to the new council and the new budget vote. But I think it would be prudent to get ahead of that. So, thank you.
Dr. Wilder?
Yes. No, tomorrow is 9/11. Remember all those that lost their lives on 9/11. There've been a couple events going on. There's a walk with a stair climb on, I think, Saturday with some firefighters and that nature. And there's no way I could have did that, but I continue to pray for them, because if I did, they would be rescuing me. But again, I'm going to thank them for their service. I thank, just remember all those that lost their lives on that day. And there's several events going on this week to memorialize those that lost their lives. Thank you.
Councilman Dolan?
No items.
Councilman Missions?
Sure. Yeah, I want to thank, I want to thank Councilmember Wilder for his comments on 9/11. I appreciate that. That's, you know, that's, that's something near and dear to me. You know, I remember where I was. I was actually, I was actually on active duty in the Coast Guard. I was about a year and some change in and out in Yorktown when it happened. Changed the trajectory of my life and a lot of people's lives, you know? And now I look, see how long ago it was, and it makes me feel a little old, you know, because we've got people sitting up here that were quite simply children when it happened. Right? We've got somebody sitting right up here on this die who was a child when it happened, yet he had the nerve to attack one of our citizens falsely for his service on 9/11. Right? So, you know, I just, just want to point that out. You know, when you've never done anything with your life, you shouldn't be attacking people that have actually done things and served people and actually made differences and saved people's lives. And, you know, that's all I want to point out. Some of us were children.
Councilman Taylor?
Yes. My oldest granddaughter was born on September 11th. So, you know, I have mixed, and I know what I was doing that day when the call went out. I was repairing the window up on Madison Street. And when the call went out, I was already on my knees. And it bothered me to the point where tears came down my face, because I'm an American American. When you attacked the United States, you attacked me.
Amen.
And I lost Sergeant Major this week, Sergeant Major J.C. Coleman. We did, when I went into the inner-city ministry for Thomas Road, he was there, leading me. We would go door-to-door every other Saturday. He was, he was, he took an AK-47 bullet in Vietnam and walked the streets with Larry Taylor for 22 years. So I'd like to give him a big shout-out.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
Madam Mayor, I was, I was in first grade. And I remember my parents picking me up and seeing smoke from the beach.
And I remember my parents picking me up and seeing smoke from the beach. And I learned, growing up through that, to never take anything from a bully. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thinking on 9/11, if you haven't had a chance to go to the Fields of Honor display over off of Graves Mill Road, I encourage you to go. They had their opening ceremony this past Sunday. It was beautiful. There's 1,000 flags up there that are either honoring fallen or in honor of living veterans or certain people that are special in our community. And it's really a beautiful display. So there, I think, I'm going to be there until September 21st. And every night or evening, they play tap. So you can go listen to that, and it's really breathtaking. So I encourage our citizens to go by and do that, especially tomorrow. I had the, you know, the schools are my favorite place to be during the week. And last week, I got to go over to Bass Elementary with Ms. Lewis and Ms. Gakowski's class, her third grader or so. What's up, kids? And also to Ms. Davis's class over at Darrington Elementary, her second-grade class, and got to do my favorite thing, which is read to the kiddos. And I had so much fun. And there was a second grader in Ms. Davis's class that asked me what my vision for our city was, a seven-year-old. And my answer to him was that every one of the children in our city has a choice for their future. And it reminded me what, at least I know what I want to be doing up here for them is making sure that we invest wisely so that those kids have a future, that they can choose, that they don't have to settle for. So that's my motivation. And speaking of our schools, we will be holding our joint work session with LCS School Board on October 22nd at the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance, 300 Lucato Place, at 4 p.m. This will replace our regular work session for that evening and later that night. We will meet back here on, in Council Chamber for our 7 p.m. meeting that evening. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge the retirement announcements for the Superintendent Dr. Crystal Edwards and Deputy Superintendent of Instruction and Programs Amy Pugh that was announced yesterday, both ending at the end of the school year. They have dedicated many years to our school system and students, and their leadership has been instrumental in serving the students and families as they transition into their next chapters. I know we'll support the school board in their search for new leadership to ensure a smooth transition and the continued success of our schools. And finally, I would also like to take a moment to acknowledge and address the importance of school safety in light of the recent events around our country. We remain committed to working closely with our Attorney General, our Police Chief, the Commonwealth's Attorney, and other key partners to ensure that Lynchburg is safe and fully prepared. School security is a top priority of ours, and we are taking the necessary steps to safeguard our students, our staff, and our community. Consideration of a closed meeting to discuss the investment of public funds by the city where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interests of the city would be adversely affected pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A6 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, the subject being the Region 2,000 Services Authority and its potential expansion. And two, where needed, consult with legal counsel and receive briefings from staff members about actual litigation, where such consultation in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigation posture of the city pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, the subject being the litigation between the city, other localities, and the Region 2,000 Services Authority. And consideration of a closed meeting to discuss the investment of public funds and/or the disposal of city real estate where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public or discussed publicly initially, the financial interest and bargaining position of the city would be adversely affected pursuant to Sections 2.2-3711A6 and 2.2-3711A3 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, the subject of the closed meeting being specific to the renewal of a current city franchise or lease. Do I have a motion to go into a closed meeting? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we vote? Yeah.
Since it is already been after a voting note because we could easily move this to the 7 o'clock tonight. Some people have dogs to feed and had responsibilities 10 minutes ago. So in fairness and deference to time, it would have been best to put this off till the 7 o'clock meeting tonight. Since you didn't want to do that, I'll be voting no for this.
Go ahead and vote on your computer. If you can't, if it didn't pop up, do your e-vote, please.
Councilmember Taylor? Thank you for your patience. The motion passes.
Okay, we are now in closed session.